Mary, are you ready? Good evening. This is Paso Robles City Council for Tuesday, August or March 21st. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and led by Fred Strong.
With me, please, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for our invocation led by Sarah Duren.
Let's pray. Our Heavenly Father, we come to you in your son's name, Jesus. We once again thank you for our city of Paso Robles. We are extremely grateful for your blessings. Thank you for your protection through the rain and snow recently. We recognize you as our Creator, Savior, and Lord over everything. Thank you that no matter what, you are always in control and you are still on the throne. I ask you for divine direction and wisdom during this meeting this evening. Your word says that it's the fear of the Lord that is the beginning of wisdom. So more than anything, I ask that those here in leadership would reverence you above all, be glorified in their decision-making tonight. And as Psalms 19:14 says, "Let the words of our mouth and the meditation of our hearts be acceptable in your sight, O Lord, our strength and our redeemer. And as always, be magnified and glorified in Paso Robles." We ask these things, the name that is above every name, Jesus. Amen.
Amen. And that was Sarah K. Duren from the Revival Center. And thank you, Sarah. Okay, we'll start with roll call.
Councilmember Bausch.
President.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Strong.
Here.
Let the record show Mayor Martin is absent.
Okay, and staff introductions, starting with Warren Fries.
Warren Fries, Community Development Director.
Mary Sponhalts, Deputy City Clerk.
Melissa Boyer, City Clerk, joined by Karen Jackson, IT Technician, and Shawna Howenstein Civic Engagement Coordinator.
Chris Huet, Assistant City Manager.
Christopher Luckel, Utilities Director.
Kelly Cephoris.
Greta Burman.
Peter Sessom.
Ryan Morrell, District Service.
Dave North, Leach.
Terry, General Commander.
Derek Dash.
David Adams, City Attorney.
Ty Lewis, City Manager.
Isaac Rosen, Assistant City Attorney.
Okay. And Mary, if you would, please go ahead and read the statement for AB 361.
The city has returned to hybrid public meetings pursuant to AB 361, which allows for a deviation from the teleconference rules required by the Ralph M. Brown Act. Residents now have the option to attend the meeting in person or to participate remotely. To participate remotely, residents can livestream the meeting at www.prcity.com/youtube and call 805-865-7276 to provide public comment via phone. The phone line will be open just prior to the start of the meeting and remain open throughout the meeting to ensure the opportunity to comment on each item heard by the council. Written public comments can be submitted via email to cityclerk@prcity.com prior to 12 noon on the day of the city council meeting, to be posted as an addendum to the agenda. If submitting written comments in advance of the meeting, please note the agenda item by number or name. City council meetings will be livestreamed during the meeting and also available to play later on YouTube by accessing the following link, www.prcity.com/youtube.
Okay, very good. So we'll begin with presentations. Item one is the 2023 Education and Sharing Day Proclamation. Could I have Rabbi Gordon join me? Is it on? There it is. There you go. Okay, proclamation on Education and Sharing Day, Sunday, April 2nd, 2023. Whereas the basis of continuity in any society is education, and in the city of Paso Robles, the education of our youth is a priority. In order to achieve its highest goals, education must not only impart knowledge, but also teach the students how to live, forming and strengthening their moral character to make better lives for themselves and individuals and for the society as whole, imparting moral and educational ethical values that have been the bedrock of society since the dawn of civilization. A global spiritual leader and leading advocate of advancement of education, the Rabbim Rabbi Menachem Shershtin of Righteous Memory stressed the moral and ethical education empowerment of every individual to develop their full potential in making the world a better place. Whereas such an education can nurture the unity and diverse peoples through encouraging increasing acts of goodness, kindness, and birth with awareness that even a single positive act of an individual can change the world and usher an era of global peace. When there will be peace within your walls, serenity within your mansions is from Psalm 122. Education and Sharing Day is observed each year on the Rabbim's birthday, recognizing his outstanding and lasting contributions toward the improvement of education, morality, and acts of charity around the world. A day of pause to reflect on our responsibility to ensure our youth have the foundation necessary to lead rich and personal lives fulfilling it through service and good works. Whereas April 2nd of 2023 will mark 121 years since the Rabbim's birth, capping a year in which thousands of new institutions and initiatives were launched throughout the world to tribute his celebration. And this year has an added significance as a year of heckle, a biblical event of unity, education, spiritual growth, emphasizing how every person is crucial to perfecting the world. Now therefore be it resolved by John Hammond, by virtue of the authority vested me as Mayor Pro Tem and speaking on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby proclaim Sunday, April 2nd, 2023, to an education and sharing day in the city of Paso Robles and call upon everyone to work together to create a better and brighter and more promising future for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, City Council members. I'm honored to be at this meeting this evening. My name is Rabbi Mayor Gordon and together with my wife, Etty, we direct the Chabad of Paso Robles Jewish Center, which is one of a couple of hundred Chabad Jewish centers across the state and thousands across the globe. Today's proclamation marking Education and Sharing Day on April 2nd honors Rabbi Menachem Mendel Schneerson of Less Than Memory, known as the Rabbim. The Rabbim is considered the most influential Rabbi in modern history. As the Mayor Pro Tem mentioned, this year is going to mark 120 years from when the Rabbim was born in Ukraine in 1902, eventually escaping Poland and coming to the United States in 1941. The Rabbim became the leader of the Chabad Lubavitch movement in 1950. While he concentrated his efforts on rebuilding and re-energizing the Jewish community after the devastation of the Holocaust, the Rabbim paid great attention on the needs of all humanity. It was for this reason that the United States Congress designated this day in 1978 as Education Day, honoring the Rabbim and his efforts for education and sharing among all people. This was followed by President Carter and every U.S. President, including our President Biden, declaring this day as a day to refocus our efforts on education and sharing, creating a brighter future for society. Often, we think of education only as knowledge and the means to build a career and to make it as an individual in the big world. The Rabbim emphasized many times that education is not only about acquisition of knowledge and encourage world leaders and education activists on the need to focus great importance on education to build good character and increase awareness of moral and ethical values, helping us to look out for one another and to add goodness and kindness in the world. This foundation is the bedrock of society and keeps the world together. Knowledge can sometimes come with ego and it could come with arrogance and it could come with desire to be powerful. But when knowledge is based on the foundation of being kind and compassionate, of good character traits, of sharing and caring, then that knowledge becomes a source of beautiful things and changes the world for good. We're at a time when we can't help but see what's going on in the world, and we see that unfortunately, the power for destruction is greater than ever before. But at the same time, we see that the power for goodness, the quest for kindness and peace in the world, and the ability to actualize it, is also greater than ever before. The Rabbim taught that every individual, in fact, every individual action has an impact on the entire universe. Small acts of random goodness and kindness can change the world. It is these acts of random kindness that turn into routine acts of kindness and create a bright future and a bright present too. That is why I have here this charity box here with me today, and I'm going to put in a coin in the charity box. Having a charity box in our home, in our office, or in our kids' bedroom reminds us of the ongoing duty we have as individuals to share, care, and give to each other. Our future and our destiny is not in the hands of someone else. The Rabbim emphasized time and time again that every single person is a full world and that it is up to each and every one of us to change the world. Honorable Mayor Pro Tem and City Council members, I bless you today that your efforts in proclaiming Education and Sharing Day in Paso Robles should enact and bring about a brighter future in the city of Paso Robles, which is already a kind and caring place. May it bring about more acts of random and routine kindness, sharing, and compassion. Thank you for everything you do and for making this important proclamation.
All right, moving on. Item two, Central Coast Community Energy Presentation, and that will be by Chris Huet.
Yes, good evening, Mayor Pro Tem, Councilmembers. Chris Huet, Assistant City Manager. With us tonight is Judy Young with 3CE to provide an update to the council and the community about various programs and activities of 3CE. So with that, I believe Judy is joining us virtually, so I will turn that over to her for the presentation. Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Chris, and thank you, Mayor Martin and council members. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Great, thank you. It is my honor to be here tonight to highlight Central Coast Community Energy's recent accomplishments as well as our plans for 2023 and beyond. My name is Judy Young. I am a senior customer accounts manager with 3CE with a focus on our member agencies. I will start with a brief introduction to community choice aggregation for anyone who is new to how the CCA model works and how it is different from the investor-owned utility model. Then I will highlight Central Coast Community Energy's history and role in your community. Once a community signs on to a CCA, the CCA takes over electricity procurement while the existing investor-owned utility continues to handle transmission, distribution, metering, and billing. CCAs are public agencies and return revenue to their communities in the form of programs, incentives, and rebates, and can also assist with local job creation and renewable energy development. Next slide. Our agency has seen tremendous expansion since we formed in 2017. We expanded from Monterey Bay to the entire Central Coast, and your community joined in 2021. Today, 3CE is made up of 34 member agencies throughout five counties, serving more than 400,000 customers and securing over $1 billion in renewable energy and storage agreements while returning $26 million to our communities. Next slide. And next slide. Over 94% of utility customers in our communities are enrolled with 3CE, and in the year 2022 alone, we delivered over 5,000 gigawatt hours of electricity throughout our region. Also, in the last year and a half, we enrolled the community of Buellton, completed enrollment of unincorporated regions of Santa Barbara County, and welcomed to the city of Atascadero as our newest community. Next slide. There's a lot of news to report, and I'd like to focus it on the four major benefits promised to our communities when we formed in 2017. Let's start with local control. Two slides forward, please. Thank you. Community choice aggregation allows local government to have greater control over the type and cost of energy supplied to their communities to ensure energy sources and rates reflect the community's values and goals. With 3CE, decisions about where your power comes from and how you are charged for it are made by local elected officials. We are making progress on climate goals together as a region, and we are far ahead of both state and federal targets to decarbonize our energy supply. Here in the city of Paso Robles, you share board seats with the city of Atascadero and are represented by Mayor Steve Martin and City Manager Ty Lewis. Now let's talk about rates. Next slide. And next slide. Thank you. In March of 2022, we decoupled our rates from PG&Es and established our own rate-setting procedure based on cost of service, resulting in an average of about 18% savings for residential customers. Small and medium commercial customers saved between 2% and 19% during the year 2022 once we switched to cost of service, and we expect our competitiveness with the incumbent utility to continue. Next slide. As you can see, we have worked to keep our service affordable for our communities. Now I will shift focus to our efforts to procure clean power. Today, we are at 50% clean and renewable and on track to be at 60% by the year 2025, which is five years earlier than the goal set by the state of California. Our strategy commits 3CE to meet 100% of its demand with clean and renewable resources by the year 2030 with balancing on a monthly basis, which is a full 15 years ahead of the goal set by the state of California. I will just interject here that we're actually at 60% today. Our latest power content label is 2021, and that shows us at 50%, but we're actually better than that here in the year 2023. And next slide. 3CE is also pursuing offshore wind generation and emerging technology in California. The action for leases in federal waters off the Central Coast last December was an important step in bringing these resources online. In order to achieve these goals, next slide. 3CE's procurement team has prioritized long-term contracts that bring new clean resources online as quickly as possible. To date, 3CE has executed 19 long-term power purchase agreements and energy storage agreements. Five of these projects came online in 2022 and add up to nearly 280 megawatts of generation and energy storage combined, or about 22% of our current annual load. Next slide. Meeting greenhouse gas reduction goals is also about electrification. As individuals, the biggest impact we can make to cut greenhouse gas emissions and improve air quality is to replace fossil fuel vehicles with EVs and replace the gas appliances in our homes. As 3CE works to clean the grid, electric cars and appliances will be emissions-free in their operation, and the electricity that powers them will be 100% clean and renewable. Next slide. The final 3CE commitment I am reporting on tonight is a continued investment in your community and all of the communities in our service area. Next slide. Here is what we accomplished over the last year on your screen. And looking more broadly over the past three years, 3CE has helped put more than 1,000 new and used electric vehicles on Central Coast roads by distributing more than $2 million in cash rebates paid directly to our customers. By electrifying our transportation sector, these EVs have spared more than 6,000 metric tons of regional CO2 emissions. Additionally, in collaboration with funding partners like the California Energy Commission, 3CE has delivered rebates that will help build more than 1,000 new electric vehicle charging stations for our region. We've also paid to make more than 2,000 new affordable housing units all-electric, and that support continues. Residential customers within the city of Paso Robles are eligible for rebates up to $5,000 towards EVs and chargers. Can I have the next slide? And those rebates are also toward replacing certain gas-powered appliances. Next slide. We also have programs aimed at helping our member agency partners advance electrification and stay up to date with building codes that advance electrification, and business-friendly programs designed to electrify new housing, including farmwork worker housing, and to upgrade ag equipment and install DCFC Level 3 chargers. Next slide. And next slide. With an eye to equity coupled with an awareness that many of these enhancements are out of reach for our underserved communities, we provide an additional $1,000 Electrify Your Ride and Electrify Your Home rebates for income-qualified customers. Next slide. In partnership with the state, 3CE has garnered over $343,000 for the city of Paso Robles. And next slide. Please see the Rebates and Incentives page on our website for more information and to apply. Next slide. With the continued support of the city of Paso Robles staff and community along with the rest of our communities, 3CE will continue to deliver innovative solutions, impactful programs, and exemplary service along with clean and renewable energy. Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, Judy. Questions of Judy Young, Council? Christopher? Yeah?
Thank you. Judy, a couple slides back, we had some incentives that were returned to the community. One of those was for South Coast Energy. How does that apply, or South Coast communities? How does that apply to Paso Robles? Can we go back two slides, please? That's South Central Coast and Central Project.
Yes, that is a, thank you for asking the question. That's a great question. That's actually a project funding that came from the state of California through one of their programs that we helped bring to our communities, all five of our counties. And the city of Paso Robles took, I think it was people within, customers within the city of Paso Robles, took advantage of that funding opportunity. So it's not, there were two projects from the state. One was called Central Coast Incentive Project, and the other one was called South Central Coast Incentive Project. And because of the positioning of the city of Paso Robles, you fell into the South region.
And I don't mean to press the point. I'm new here. How is that beneficial for the city of Paso Robles? Anybody remember?
Unfortunately, I wasn't here at that time, so I don't recall if this program was a member agency program, so it benefited the city itself, or if it was a community program which would benefit the people within the city that took advantage of the program.
Fair enough. Maybe you could circle back with City Manager Ty Lewis, so he can forward that information to us. Thank you.
I would be happy to, yes. Thank you.
And Judy, I had a question, and this is what's perplexed me so much. Why, I'm not sure if you can answer this or not, but why is it that the state of California gives no credit for renewable hydro and the Diablo Canyon power generation? Do you have an answer or understand why?
Well, I can't speak on behalf of the state of California. Are you asking why nuclear is not considered a renewable energy?
Yeah, essentially that and hydro is what I've been told before, that we don't get any credits for those kind of generations.
Right. Hydro and nuclear are both clean energies. They are not, however, considered renewable. And we've talked at length, other staff members within the agency and myself about why hydro is not, and it turns out the answer is something about the amount of equipment and energy that it takes to create. The hydro makes it not renewable, however, it is still clean. And the same with nuclear. We know enough about nuclear to understand why it's not a renewable energy, however, it is a clean energy. And our board has directed our staff to focus on renewable energy, new sources of renewable energy.
I see. One other last question, too. Again, citizens of Paso Robles still have the option to opt out if they do not want to use 3CE. I'm assuming that's still in the plan?
Absolutely. Anyone can opt out at any time. There is a time period when a new community joins our PPA where there's no additional charges to opt out. I'm not sure what that time period is, but I believe that it's, the community of Paso Robles is beyond that time period at this point. So there, it might, there might be a charge from PG&E to opt out at this point, but anybody who would like to can certainly call or get in touch with us. Call our call center, send an email to info@3ce.org, and we can check into that for you.
Yeah, I understand. As it stands, I believe 3CE is less money than PG&E currently anyway, but I just want to make sure that people understand that they do have an option now. It's not just one source, it's two.
That's right. It's called community choice energy for that reason. You can, you can opt out at any time and opt back to just PG&E. And just to be clear, PG&E, you're still getting your bill from PG&E, and they're still in the mix. We're handling the generation portion, they're still doing distribution, transportation, transmission, pardon me, and billing.
Yes, that's always going to be on everybody's bill.
That's right.
Okay, Councilman Strong has a question for you.
Yes, along that same line, I'm thinking of what your big claims are for, and you're using wind, and wind isn't really renewable. It just is, it's the movement of air.
Just like sun. Yeah, they're both considered renewable.
And it is considered renewable, but nuclear isn't.
So creating energy from wind and solar does not deplete wind and solar. That's right.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, this doesn't quite seem logical to me, but that ain't right. I'm going to open up for any questions from the public that I'd like to ask. Judy, any questions? Seeing none? Okay. Thank you, Judy, for your presentation.
Well, thank you very much for having me tonight.
You bet. Item three, Fire Department Annual Report. Chief Jonathan Stornetta?
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim Hammond and members of the council. Jonathan Stornetta, Fire Chief. First, I'd like to start off with an apology for not being in person tonight, as I've been out ill the last couple of days. So tonight, I'll provide an overview of our 2022 annual report. I'll briefly discuss our response metrics from last year, and then towards the end, I'll spend a little more time focusing on why our calls for service are increasing beyond our projections. Next slide, please. Our annual report is available to the public on our Fire Department webpage if they'd like to view it. And currently, the Fire Department has 36 operational staff members on duty daily, is a minimum of nine firefighters and one battalion chief. Our Community Risk Reduction Division consists of one fire marshal, one fire inspector, and our administration consists of an admin coordinator, deputy fire chief, and the fire chief. Currently, we respond out of two fire stations, with the third to be complete by this fall. And to keep pace with demand, two fire engines are currently staffed out of our Fire Station One and one of our Fire Station Two. Once Fire Station Three is complete, one of the two fire engines at Fire Station One will relocate to Fire Station Three, and all of our fire engines are staffed with at least one paramedic on duty on each engine daily. Next slide, please. Excluding 2020, which was during the COVID pandemic and we saw a decrease in our responses, we have seen a steady increase in calls for service over the past 10 years. Calls for service in 2022 were just over 4,700. Next slide, please. This chart here was created in 2019 and presented to council, and it was based on historical data. At that time, we anticipated a 3.8% increase in calls for service year after year. The year-after-year projections do not include any increases in population or development, but the column on the far right, outlined in yellow, accounts for the impacts of the projects currently in the city's project pipeline. This slide also illustrates the number of firefighters needed to keep pace with those anticipated increases in service demands. As we compare last year's responses to these projections, we see that in 2022, our calls for service nearly surpassed our projected responses for that of 2024. I will discuss some of the reasons why we're exceeding our projections later in the presentation. Next slide, please. This slide shows how many times in 2022 we had no resources available to respond. In total, we are unavailable to respond to 239 emergencies. In these instances, we must request assistance from our neighboring fire departments, or the 911 caller must wait for us to complete our current call, and then our fire engine will respond as soon as they're complete to that pending call. Next slide, please. The previous chart showed how many calls we are unable to respond to each month. This chart shows the amount of time we had no resources available each month. So in 2022, it totaled just over 74 hours the community was without emergency services. And that's compared to 63 hours in 2021, so an increase of about 11 hours of our community without any emergency resources. Next slide, please. City councils' established goals derive at all emergencies in four minutes or less, that's 90% of the time. Currently, we are only able to achieve this goal 56% of the time. As you see on the graph here, our response times in the 90th percentile are 8 minutes and 26 seconds. This is an increase of 1 minute and 23 seconds above last year's 90th percentile. The largest contributors to our inability to meet response times are geographical travel distances between fire stations, as well as increasing development on the outlying areas of the city limits, which increases our response times. The current number of fire stations, which is two, but we have the third that should be completed in the fall that will hopefully help with these response times. Simultaneous calls, that's the number of times that all of our equipment is tied up on calls and unable to respond to the next call. And finally, we are experiencing an all-time high in our request for calls for service. Next slide, please. Our busiest fire station is our downtown Fire Station One. Fire Station One is the busiest fire station in San Luis Obispo County. We're hopeful that the opening of Fire Station Three will reduce the call load and the impacts currently that Fire Station One is experiencing. Next slide, please. I mentioned at the beginning of this presentation that there are factors impacting our calls for service that cause us to exceed our projections. These factors have significant implications moving forward if not addressed. The top three factors increasing our calls for service today include the lack of primary care services, the lack of mental health services, and the lack of substance abuse services. Next slide, please. I will start with the substance abuse. In 2023, the number one drug seized in San Luis Obispo County is fentanyl. Fentanyl is a synthetic opioid that was originally developed as an analgesic or painkiller for surgery. It's 30 times stronger than heroin and 50 times stronger than morphine. It's becoming widely available in the form of laced counterfeit pills, and that includes right here in Paso Robles. The chart on the right shows total drug-related cases from all police departments in San Luis Obispo County in 2022. And there was nearly 4,000 total drug-related cases. That's more than 11 cases a day in San Luis Obispo County alone. Next slide, please. Fentanyl is now the leading cause of death for Americans between ages 18 and 45. That's more than all gun victims or car accident victims in that age range. It does not matter what your social economic status is, your race, or your ethnicity. We are witnessing opioid overdoses in all categories. Right now, we are headed down a dangerous lethal path of surging drug overdoses if the course is not corrected soon. Nearly 70% of all drug overdose deaths involve an opioid. In 2021, 79,000 individuals in the U.S. between the ages of 18 and 45 died of fentanyl overdoses. Last year, that number increased to 110,000. You can see our metrics on this slide here. Last year, we had over 100 overdoses, and our paramedics administered Narcan over 50 times, and that doesn't even include Narcan administered by bystanders. In the first 60 days of this year, we had 15 overdoses, administered Narcan 14 times, two fatalities. The two fatalities were a 31-year-old male and a 32-year-old female with a young child. In San Luis Obispo County, last year, 43 confirmed drug-related deaths, 62 pending, with a total of 105. In the first 23 days of 2023, 18 drug-related deaths here in San Luis County. 66% of all the deaths in San Luis Obispo County so far are overdose. So currently, we're taking steps to reduce overdoses locally by providing Narcan to members of the public and working with the state EMSA to expand our paramedic scope of practice. Expanding the paramedic scope of practice will require more from our paramedics and more city resources. We need a sobriety center in San Luis Obispo County if we intend to make a difference in the number of overdoses we're seeing locally. Next slide, please. Another impact contributing to our increasing calls for service is the lack of primary care services. Our paramedic services and the emergency departments have now become our residents' primary source of care. Currently, our county is short 62 primary care physicians. There are two reasons for this. One is the cost of living, and the other is the reimbursement rates offered by Medicaid and Medi-Cal. Medicaid and Medi-Cal still have us considered as a rural county, so this means that our physicians' reimbursement rates are much, much less than they would be elsewhere. It's difficult for doctors to justify high home prices here and low reimbursement rates when they can make similar salaries in places that are less expensive to live. We are already experiencing significant impacts from the primary care shortage, and it's not, it's only here, it's here to get worse. It's going to continue to get worse. Not only is the shortage impacting us, but it's also causing overcrowding of our emergency departments. Another option for those in our community is CHC, or Community Health Centers, and they have an emphasis on the medically underserved. The problem with having CHC is they're only open 8 to 5, and most individuals work 8 to 5. So when they need medical treatment after hours, either they're calling us our 911 service, or again, they're impacting emergency departments. And then there's Obamacare. While well-intended, we are seeing unforeseen negative circumstances as a result of it. Next slide, please. Lastly, we are seeing an increase in emergency responses because there is a lack of behavioral health services in this county. The San Luis Obispo County Psychiatric Health Facility, or as some refer to as the PUF, provides treatment for those having a psychiatric crisis, but you can only go with the PUF if you are on Medicaid or incarcerated. All others needing behavioral health services must find a facility outside of San Luis Obispo County. We have zero beds in this county for adults or pediatrics with private insurance and a behavioral health problem. This county also needs a crisis stabilization unit and sobriety center. Having these facilities available would prevent us from transporting everyone to the emergency department. The emergency department has become the stopgap for the lack of services in this county. Just the other day, I had a meeting with one of the emergency department physicians, and he said he had a psych patient sitting in his emergency room, had been there for six days, and still sitting there when we met. He said his due that a patient couldn't be transferred out to another facility outside of the county. Fortunately, though, this year, the Board of Supervisors had made behavioral health a priority for fiscal, this fiscal year, but the problem is not going to be solved anytime soon. It'll take a lot of funding and require collaboration between all levels of government and healthcare facilities. Until these services are offered in this county, we can expect to see our calls for service increase, and those dealing with addiction or behavioral health emergencies continue to struggle. Next slide. And I know that was a lot of information, but with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Jonathan. Questions of Chief Stornetta from the council? Gregory?
Hi, Jonathan, thank you for your report. I just had a quick question on, start with the fire stations. Are we going to put the squad vehicle back into play when Station Three opens?
So the fire engine at Station, one of the two at Fire Station One is going to move to Fire Station Three, and then we had in the projections or planned on the 10-year staffing analysis to bring back the squad in 2024.
And then I'm going to move ahead to your presentation on drug addiction.
Yes, sir.
When I was at a meeting, one of the state representatives is stating that this is the year for drug addiction and resource centers. Is there an ad hoc group in the county, or do we have anything available in the city to put a group together to resource those funds to get an addiction resource center in the North County?
We just started last week on part of the Emergency Medical Care Committee for the county. It's made up of physicians, city managers, fire chiefs, and our goals are to come up with ways that we can transport to alternate destinations, crisis stabilization unit, and then a place for the psychiatric patients to go. The problem is always funding. We've just started working on this project, and then Nick Drew just recently became the department manager of that part of public health. So there's a lot of work to be done, but we can't do it alone, and we would welcome more people to the group to see if we can make some change.
So if that were to happen, would that come under behavioral health, or we'll have our own department?
We haven't got that far, but I'm sure behavioral health would definitely play a role in it.
Okay. All right, well, thank you very much, Jonathan.
You're welcome.
And Councilman Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Gregory, for asking. Good question. The other question, Jonathan, that I was going to ask, in your fentanyl presentation portion, you mentioned a comparison of fentanyl deaths versus homicides, Judy, guns. Can you repeat those numbers, please?
I'm sorry, what part were you referencing? The number?
Yeah, right there. You mentioned how many, you were comparing deaths by guns versus deaths by overdose.
Oh, so that was, fentanyl's the leading cause of death for Americans between the ages of 18 and 45, and that includes vehicle accidents and guns combined.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anything further, Chris?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, just a comment again, from what I've been hearing, not only from the county level, but also state level, that the drug addiction and the mental health situation has become a priority for them, and I hope that, again, that they recognize that it's going to take a lot of funds, a lot of people, to make this thing better. So I'm glad that they've got it more on priority, because that's truly where, I think, a lot of our homeless need some support, which we don't have the ability to do personally as a city. So, very good. Anybody in the public like to have a question? Michael?
Michael Rivera, such a sobering report. I would just ask that this council have the chief do these presentations on a regular basis, so we can determine and benchmark our, either our failures or our successes, and if we're making any progress moving forward? Because we could have reports all day long, but if they're, if it continues to worsen, get worse and worse, this is, again, a cancer that's going to consume us. And we need to take aggressive, strong action to, to try to stop this. And I so much appreciate Chief Stornetta being so upfront and transparent to the public. And I would hope that we would continue that process so that the public, we got to bring the public into this, because there's a lot of brains out there. We got a lot of good people out there that have a lot of good ideas. And we need to use every resource we have, every human resource we have, in order to solve this problem. Because committees are great, you can talk about this all day long, but the bottom line is, are we having success? And are we achieving our goals? And what are our goals? Do we have any goals? I didn't hear any goals. And maybe this city council needs to set up some goals, and then measure yourself by those goals. Thank you.
Additionally, thank you, Jonathan, for your report. I will make a comment, too, that luckily, we have Echo in our town. I mean, they're a great partnership, and without them, I'm not sure how we would be faring without their support. So I know that they have their new fundraiser coming on board here pretty quick, so we need to make sure that we get all out to support Echo. Okay. Moving on then to general public comment. This is a time that public may address the council on items that are not on the agenda. You'll have three minutes to speak, and we cannot take any action or sometimes discuss it, but we can try to get your answers if there is a question. So anyone wishing to address the council now, this is time for public comment.
Okay, I followed the instructions. Mayor Protem Hammond and Council-
Your name, sir?
Ron Cuff, citizen of Paso Robles. I want to thank all of you for taking a huge step by proclaiming your support for moral and ethical education. Yes, the city does play an important role in protecting and educating our youth. We live in a fabulous place, but it is time. It is time for us to reexamine and agree on who we are as a community and what we stand for. Sadly, drugs and gangs are reported in our schools, and alcohol is advertised in front of our children almost everywhere. For young people with fragile, developing brains, both alcohol and marijuana can be a gateway drug to meth, heroin, and fentanyl. According to the National Institute of Health, 90% of addiction takes root before age 18, during the middle and high school years. Tonight's proclamation makes it clear that we are taking responsibility for our children's future and trying to keep them out of the riverbed. But kids see everything, and the thing they need to see most is a good example. Besides the proclamation, there are other, frankly, more important things we can do as a city to help our young people learn, stay healthy, and thrive. Here are five actions we can consider. Number one, don't permit retail cannabis stores to open in front of our children selling drug-infused products that look like candy. Number two, enforce the laws that prohibit people from living on public property and polluting the Salinas River. Three, prohibit advertising of addictive products in front of minors. Four, enforce laws against providing addictive products to minors and increase the penalties for providing. Five, ban the sale of the kid-attractive alcohol products that are obviously being marketed to minors. There's one that I pick up in the riverbed all the time. It's called 99. It's 99% alcohol. It comes in a three-and-a-half-ounce clear container, and it's sold in about 20 different fruit flavors, peanut butter flavors, cinnamon flavors. I don't think anybody in this room drinks that. Several years ago, a respected Paso Robles teacher told me, "Ron, I can't teach a kid who's high, drunk, or hungover." How true is that? Make no mistake, I'm not a prohibitionist. Adults are free to ingest mind-altering, altering substances, just not in public while driving or at the point of intoxication in front of kids. I've spoken with and tried to encourage dozens of unhappy campers living in the riverbed. Every single one has volunteered to me that they are suffering from addiction. Some are locals, but many are not. Finally, there are two candidates running to fill a vacant Paso Robles school board seat. One candidate, a decorated veteran, believes in parental rights, good order, and calm in the classroom, and has zero tolerance for drugs, alcohol, or gangs. The other candidate is funded by the education establishment and supports the status quo. Make a good choice. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Michael?
As I mentioned earlier, Chief Stornetta had a wonderful presentation. What I'd like to see happen is I'd like to see our police chief, great police chief, by the way, to do a comprehensive report to this council related to the issues and calls we're getting in the riverbed, as well as Echo. What the overdose issues are there, what the drug issues are there, and the calls for service, so we have a clear understanding and picture of what we're dealing with. I don't think we've done that. I don't think we've been transparent to the community. Echo is a great organization. They're attempting to do a very tough job. However, with, if the public does not have transparency and understanding, and again, we have a lot of good people in this community, and there's a lot of good brain power here, and we've, we must find a different way. What's going on now is not working. We're not, we are, we are failing. We're going in the wrong direction. So I think having a report from the chief, again, on a regular basis, outlining those particular points, and measuring ourselves to determine whether or not we're success, we're being successful or we're failing. If we're failing, we got to change things. We got to change the direction. Because, again, this is a cancer. It's going to consume us, and we need to stop. We need to stop it and reverse course. Doing the same thing over and over again and expecting a different outcome is the definition of insanity, and we must stop it. Being sober, being clear, and reaching out to the community and being transparent. I understand that it's controversial, but that's the way our system works. It's, it's our responsibility as people in this republic to participate in our government and find solutions to problems. You guys can't do it by yourself. Kai can't do it by himself. The chief can't do it by himself. It's going to require a comprehensive approach to these problems. It's going to mean the faith community. It's going to mean people who are committed to seeing these problems solved and not perpetuating them. So I would hope that the chief of police would have a regular, a regular report to the public and to the council, and measuring and also moving to measure our outcomes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Okay. We'll go ahead and close public comment. Move on to item H, agenda items to be deferred. Mr. City Manager, do we have anything that you have on the list?
Thank you, Mr. Hammond. We do. Item under your public hearings, K1, conditional street abandonment, 23-01, portions of Victoria Place, San Luis Avenue, Frontage Road, Hortense Avenue, and Gregory Avenue, and unnamed alleys. As you, council recall, these are all streets that were scheduled to be vacated by the city in the transaction for Pioneer Park with the fairgrounds. The state has requested a little bit more time to review the maps that we were ready to present tonight. They're a little bit overwhelmed at the state and asked for a little bit more time. So with the consensus of the council, we would like to continue that to a date certain, which would be the next city council meeting.
Okay. Do we need to make a motion, then, to go ahead and do that?
So moved.
Councilman Gregory, Councilman Bausch?
And just a point of clarification for the motion maker in the second, so that was a voice vote to open and continue item K1 to a date certain. The city manager mentioned the next city council meeting.
J1?
Yes, sir.
Very good. So that'll be a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Carius? Thank you, Mr. Lewis. All right, moving on, then, we have the consent calendar. These are items that don't normally need discussion, and/or if someone does have a question or want to pull for further discussion from staff, we'll go ahead and get the council to let me know first. If not, then we'll go ahead and bring the public involved. So, Mr. Councilman Gregory?
Yeah, I just have a question on item 8. Could someone just explain that briefly, please? That's, uh, Deidus.
That's the street out there at the airport. Deidus?
Yes. So the master plan of the airport had several streets that were supposed to be built. Some of them didn't get built, and then we had a developer that wanted to develop some properties, and so the airport manager negotiated, and they created Right Way, which is a cul-de-sac street that connects to Dry Creek Road. So we're going to be building that street along with sewer, water, and all the services, and we already have a, I think Triana Winery is going to be connecting to that Right Way. I think the planning commission approved that last week, and then we have an RV storage that is going to be renting the, the end of the cul-de-sac, and so they will use Right Way for their access and connect to the sewer and water. So we are acting as a developer and building these roads for these properties.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a further question on that, Deidus. So because this is on airport-city property, therefore, the city is responsible rather than the developer to build it, correct?
Correct.
Got it. All right. Anyone else have anything to pull or questions on any other items?
I do not.
Good. Does the public have anyone that has a question or would like to pull an item, not a consent item? These are going to be items 1 through 9. Bring them back to council, then, for discussion and/or action, please.
Mayor?
Councilman Strong.
With approval of the Senate. Second.
Okay, we have items 1 through 9. Councilman Strong's the first, and Councilman Gregory's the second. Any discussion? Call for the question, Mayor.
Councilmember Strong?
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory?
Aye.
Councilmember Bausch?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hammond?
Aye.
Motion's passed unanimously.
And City Manager Lewis, would you like to go ahead and then explain what we have just voted on?
I would. So our first item is the March 7, 2023 city council minutes, followed by the March 13 city council special meeting minutes, followed by the advisory body minutes, which is the planning commission and library boards, receipt of our regular warrant register. Item number 5 is reaffirmation of Resolution 23-18 approving a remote and hybrid remote and in-person public meetings citywide as needed pursuant to Assembly Bill 361. Item number 6 is receipt of the treasurer's report for December of 2022. Item number 7 is award of a contract for the annual East Side Slurry Seal Project. Item number 8, I think Deidus gave you a pretty comprehensive review of. And the last item, which is item number 9, is the approval of a ward of construction contract for water and sewer upgrades located on 17th Street near Chestnut to Spring Streets. And that is your consent calendar.
Very good. Thank you, Kai. Moving on, then, to public hearings. We have now pushed on to a date certain, item 1, so we will not talk about that one. Move on to item 2, Thorndike Office Building Planning Commission Appeal, and that'll be
Yes, Mayor Protem Hammer, Hammond, or something like that, members of the council. This is Brian Thorndike's project out on Mysteria Lane and Jermaine. This is the corner of Mysteria and Jermaine Avenue. It's a vacant lot on the corner. This was approved in the early 2000s for an eight-lot subdivision, along with some office condominium buildings, as shown here. This has been on, been approved for some time. Mr. Thorndike bought the property and is working to do a different type of project there. So this is a view just of the corner, showing the vacant corner property. So at the February 14 Planning Commission's meeting, the planning commission, on a 6-0 vote, approved the project. They approved the tentative map, which reduced the number of lots from eight to six. They approved a development plan to establish a master development plan over the six lots and provide conceptual site planning, building architecture, landscaping, and other details for the development of the six parcels. Along with the project, there was specific development plans for lot number one. Mr. Thorndike plans to keep this lot and build this building, so he provided the additional information, which was able to allow for the approval of these plans for the slot one. The idea is that lots 2 through 6 would come back in the future with separate ownerships, possibly, and come forward with a project where they would provide plans at that time once there was an owner and they had a project to build. The intent was that the, the information provided, design guidelines, exhibits, would be enough information that the project could come back through a DRC review, was the intent of that process and submittal by the applicant. After reviewing the project, hearing the public hearing, the planning commission modified some conditions, and basically what it indicated was that the lots 2 through 5, or actually lots 2 through 6, would go back through a process, but rather than going through a DRC, the planning commission requested that that be modified, that those lots go back to the planning commission. The other thing they indicated was, these, on this development plan here, they're showing some kind of white areas. Those are possible outdoor storage areas. Don't really know until the projects come forward if they're going to need a storage area and where, where it might be located. However, for lot 1, since we did have the specific information, the proposed accessory storage area was along the side. The planning commission, with their approval, requested that any storage areas be located behind the building or not in a situation where they are adjacent to the street. They didn't want to see the storage yard from the street. So they modified the conditions to require relocating those behind a building. With that was the request that they go back to the planning commission, lots 2 through 6, as well as redesign for the location of the storage yards. The project was approved with those conditions, and then after the planning commission action, Mrs. Jardini from Planning Solutions, on behalf of Mr. Thorndike, submitted the letter requesting the appeal. So the appeal is what we have before you this evening. Option 1 would be to deny the appeal and uphold the planning commission's February 14 resolution, or option 2 would be to approve the appeal, which would, the council would be approving, reapproving the project at the council level with the language to allow future development to go to the DRC. And the other alternative is to allow the storage areas as shown in the, in the development plan. We did add a five-foot setback from the face of the building, a little bit of additional language there, if that's the way council would like to go. Having that storage yard setback from the building face generally allows for a little more landscaping and a little more setback from the building. So that's option 2. Option 3 would be to refer back to the staff or the planning commission, and option 4 is to deny the project by adopted findings. So the recommendation is the council review the record for this matter and determine whether to uphold the planning commission's action and deny the appeal, which is option 1, or approve the appeal, which would be approving the project with the appellant's requested changes, and that's option 2 for you this evening. I didn't include a lot of the project history, the plans, the architecture. The applicant has a presentation that'll include more of that information, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions for Darren, Councilman Gregory?
Yeah, I think, I'll wait for my questions until after the applicant makes her presentation. Thank you.
Chris, anything at this time? Okay, wait. Yeah. Okay, let's go ahead and have the applicant then address the council.
Brian Thorndike, 1625 Circle B Road, Paso Robles. I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm the applicant, and Pamela Jardini is my representative. She'll give a great presentation, much better than me, so, but I wanted to just introduce myself, local businessman, native of Paso Robles, and I would love for your support. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Councilman Pamela Jardini with Planning Solutions, and I am representing Mr. Thorndike tonight. And you're probably asking why we're here when we have kind of an approved plan, and so basically what planning commission did is they approved our six-lot subdivision, and they approved the development of Lot 1. However, let me see here, now we're going to run into, there we go. We submitted an amendment to the development plan so that we could establish how each lot was going to be designed, and this included architectural design guidelines and then site design guidelines. And so we were advised that, like, the combine development has had so many developers come back and ask for revisions of their site plans and their architectural plans, because they were too restrictive, to make them less restrictive, but restrictive enough to make a cohesive- to make a cohesive development in total. So that was our goal. So we were kind of, you know, walking a fine line of not trying to be too restrictive, but to set goals. So we made a cohesive development that each future owner could buy, have their own style of building, but it made it all fit together. The other thing is that the Planning Commission asked us to move the outdoor storage areas on lots one, two, and six. They approved Lot One. Staff is recommending adding a five-foot additional buffer. If I could walk you through that now and then I'll show you some visuals of it in a little bit. Right now, we have the curb and gutter. And then we have a landscaping strip between that and the sidewalk, and then the sidewalk. So we're landscaping that area between the curb and gutter and the sidewalk. And then from the side of the sidewalk going into the development is 15 feet. Five feet of that is a bioswale, 10 feet of that is landscaping. We specifically stated that in front of the outdoor areas, that those be landscaped with a tiered landscaping that would have ground covers, then shrubs, then trees. And also, we have a very large fence that I'll show you in just a minute. So for the architectural style requirements, I'm just going to go through these pretty quickly. They're pretty apparent. You want, we wanted a clear story roof element with a minimum of three-foot overhangs, a minimum of two material types, a minimum of three colors on each building. We wanted contrasting horizontal and vertical elements. We wanted the metal slopes roofs. And that if you have large roof lines, that they should be broken up. So these are examples of what could go on. And then any kind of industrial door or roll-up doors would not distract from the main entrance. So we wanted the main entrance to be the focus and that they, that they would have recessed openings or canopies or features so that you could see the entrances. So those were the general architectural style guidelines that we thought could give you this kind of variation. And these were shown to DRC. They loved the design of the building. We went to DRC twice. I even supplied the minutes from the DRC. There were no comments about the building design. They really liked it. They liked to texture the colors. So we felt we were really good on that. And we're a little surprised by the comments at Planning Commission because we had actually four of the commissioners between the two DRCs go beyond Planning Commission then. So I'm going to break you up here for a second to make sure I'm holding your attention, just so that you understand how the interior improvements are going to take place before going to the site design guidelines. So the brown area, which is the interior road that then goes down to Wisteria Lane, Mr. Thorndike will be putting that in as part of the track map completion. When he records the track map, he will be building out Lot One. That's kind of in a red-brown. And then you see each different lot highlighted there as to what they would be building out, what is their responsibility. Again, the buildings are sort of general footprints. The parking lots would be established by your municipal code. So when a use comes in, if it's going to be a restaurant, they're going to need lots of parking. They would reduce the building size to accommodate the number of parking spaces required. If there were going to be some kind of use that had less parking requirements, less employees, then their building could be bigger and the parking lot would meet your municipal code's requirements. And that's specifically stated in the site design guidelines. So part of the other site design guidelines, and I've highlighted the areas in red, was that the front doors to the building, they're to have front doors that face the interior road, plus front doors that face the street if they had a street-facing building. So those are highlighted in red. And again, the number of parking lots would be per the City of Past Robles ordinance. So what's laid out here is kind of general idea. And we felt this was enough when we came before DRC and before the Planning Commission for this to be approved. Part of the Planning Commission's recommendation was that in the storage area that they wanted them moved away from Jermaine and Wisteria. Well, you can see from the landscaping plan that we've got landscaping between the curb and the sidewalk, which I know is pretty low. It's usually just native grasses. But then you've got tiered landscaping behind that, possibly two trees in front of the storage area. And the storage area isn't always a storage area, such as if you had a deli go into the place, then what you would have is outdoor seating. So it's not all storage area. And it's not storage area where we're going to be having construction equipment because that's not the use that can go on. These storage areas are very incidental to the use of the building. And then let me show you here. This is the fence that's proposed to be six feet high. And it's, as you can see, offers a lot of screening. So you have to think in front of this fencing, which would be sitting back, you've got trees and then shrubs and then ground cover, a sidewalk, more low ground cover, and then your street. And this does not have a lot of see-throughness in it. So just wanted to point that out to you. That's why we felt that when staff recommended an additional five-foot setback, that that wasn't required. And we felt that Planning Commission, I don't know, didn't understand why. Well, we didn't understand what their objections were to the outdoor areas because we felt they were really fully screened. I put this light in to wake everybody up. How's that for colors? Yeah, and psychedelics. Again, I just want to go over parking requirements. And I thought this was better than having a parked car up there. And again, it's not to be the dominant feature of the site. They're located in the interior so that they're screened from the public views. And so, you know, again, the parking is going to be driven by your municipal code. So they're going to look at what use is going in that building, how many parking spaces they need, and those are going to have to be accommodated. That's going to dictate then the size of the building that goes there. And so really, we are requesting that you approve our amendment, which would allow this to be final at DRC. As mentioned in your staff report, that if DRC feels like, okay, this project isn't clear enough or this project needs more further review, they can refer it up to Planning Commission. But our intent was to develop these guidelines that weren't as strict as Combine, but gave us good cohesive design guidelines, site design lines, so that it could be approved at DRC. And what that does is make cohesive development. But it also makes the lots more sellable because every time somebody buys a lot that then has to go to Planning Commission, it's a time delay. It's costly. They're afraid of it, to be honest with you. And so we were trying to avoid that by getting enough information down, enough standard guidelines down, and architectural styles down so that it could be approved at DRC. So we are requesting that you approve our amendment to the development plan and that, that the lots with the open area facing Wisteria and Jermaine not be required to do the additional five feet of landscaping and that they are allowed to remain as depicted in our site plan, not as PC recommended, which would be removing them to a different area. And so I'm here to answer any questions you have. I guess if you were looking at our recommendation, it would be sort of a modification of your number two, which would approve the appeal and then leave our outdoor storage areas, outdoor areas to remain as per the site plan that was proposed and not require the additional five-foot setback.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Jardini. Questions? Let's start with Councilman Bausch.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation and keeping us awake. Three quick questions. What's the current status for parking along Wisteria? Would that be available? I can't remember now if that's...
I believe there is onsite parking, yeah. Parallel parking.
Parallel parking. Okay, thank you. What, would this change if a future developer wanted to combine two lots into a single lot? Make one larger building, for example?
So you could do a lot merger and combine the two lots. And then again, what he would have to do is make sure his parking met the requirements for the use inside. He would go through DRC to make sure his building conforms to all the requirements that we have laid out. And that would be it. I mean, he would be, if he needed an outdoor area for restaurant seating, deli seating, that would be reviewed by DRC.
Okay.
Unless you want, DRC wanted to bring it up to full planning, right?
Correct.
And that segues nicely into the final. Just to confirm that whoever develops the future, the remaining five lots, they will still bring that project back to DRC according to Mr. Thorndike's request for the appeal. And at that point, like Mr. Hammond said, it would, if DRC felt it needed to, it would still be able to go back to planning.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Our intent was to set out the site design guidelines and the architectural design guidelines so that DRC could look at it and approve it. However, they always have the option to bump it up to Planning Commission.
Councilman Gregory?
Yeah, Ms., I'd like to ask Darren some questions. Thank you very much for your presentation.
Thank you.
Darren, I got a couple of easy questions for you. So the applicant came back to DRC several times to get the design criteria that they were requesting, correct?
That's correct. I think we mentioned at least twice they were at the DRC prior to the Planning Commission.
And do you feel that the final product that they presented was adequate enough for DRC to be able to come up with approvals for the clients?
Staff's recommendation to the Planning Commission was to approve the project with the design guidelines to go to the DRC.
Because these seem like very extensive options, so it looks very, very nice. I'm just curious if you all those, strong enough?
Sounded like some of the details of the drawing for what was shown on Lot One and then some of the details that were shown in the design guidelines. I think they were drawn by different, different folks. And there was different, just graphically, the way that the, the plan showed with some of the comments the Planning Commission made. So I think they were, they were having a hard time between Lot One, what was being shown in the design guidelines, the storage. There were just some things where their recommendation was to go back to the Planning Commission once somebody had, once you get an owner of a lot that knows their use and what they want to do, the amount of information is, you know, so much perspective of what they want to build. And trying, the challenge is trying to design a development plan or provide materials for lots where you don't know what people want to build. And that's, that's the challenge. And the Planning Commission at the time wanted to see it go to the commission.
But that is part of the mission of the DRC also, is to be able to take those tools and work with applicants individually. All right, thank you.
Councilman Bausch? Yes. Along the same line, this requirement for the five-foot setback, if they have to go back to DRC anyway when the new owner comes into an individual lot, isn't that one of the options DRC could kick up to the Planning Commission on an individual basis?
They could. I think establishing where the storage yards are in relation to the buildings is kind of an important detail. A lot of times, using the building to screen is what the, kind of the primary focus is. There's only a few situations up on the Lot One and Two there. And the thought is having the same plane, that five-foot setback is a staff recommendation. If the council wants this to stay at the DRC level and the thought is, rather than relocating the storage areas behind buildings, we understand the common driveway where the parking's located, we'd rather see the parking in the back. So it's on the right track. However, if you look at that orange line along the back of the sidewalk there, it's, there's the sidewalk and then there's a 15-foot landscape setback there. Stepping back that orange line five more feet allows that indentation rather than having the fence on the same line of a face of a building. Was the only discussion on the five-foot. And establishing that, because like Mrs. Jardini said, there may not be storage areas here. I, I have a feeling that people are going to want their building along the front, not storage yards. And it's probably a non-issue. But the, having the five feet so it separates it from the face of the building is just a more of a site planning detail that would make more sense.
But it does reduce the usable area.
It could.
Yes, thank you. Okay. I'll, I'll go ahead and ask. I will say that I did have one ex parte conversation with Mr. Thorndike when he was so frustrated with the Planning Commission. And so I asked him essentially, you know, I didn't discuss the project too much. It's just rather than bring it up to us to discuss the whole thing. So that's where we are today. And I had a question too, Darren, again. The setback of five feet doesn't seem right. I mean, if you're trying to break up the front of that elevation, I don't think we really need to go that far back. And that's something that I, I'm assuming, and I, going back to my main premise here, is that the DRC has the authority to change things like that without bumping it up to full Planning Commission, unless they feel like they need to. So I'm, I'm going to say again, I would rather see a lesser amount of property taken for just a difference in elevation. But again, that's something that I think the DRC should weigh in and, and also staff, you know, with regard to how it's going to finalize out. So the other question I had too, you know, we have that 15 feet already. And so you're essentially looking to have 20 feet from the sidewalk area to the face of fence. Is that kind of what I'm reading into this?
That's correct. There's a detention base in portion of that. But that would, that would be the 20 feet. If you added the five, would be to the fence and then the start of the storage area.
And they're conditioned as far as landscaping the bioswale. Isn't that part of the design element of the front elevation? That they do landscape that as well, like we have on 21st Street, so to speak?
You know, it's really coming from, this is a business park. It's a, it's a planned industrial zone, a business park. You've got your wineries. You've got, there's other storage yards there. And the little complex that it's trying to provide and, you know, balancing the buildings and the parking and the storage is, is what's hard to do when you don't know what's going to be built. And what we're trying to do is establish these parameters so that when somebody who's not familiar with the zoning codes or this property or what's happening, has some parameters that they can use to help design so they have a successful project at the DRC level. Storage yards, zoning code doesn't, you know, it wants big setbacks. It wants decorative fencing. There's a lot of things involved with having storage yards. And especially in the business park and the PM zone. So that's, that's where this is coming from. Again, the storage yards are not the primary focus here, but they want to make sure they provide some areas where if that's an accessory, they want it. You know, it's up to the council what they want to do. We're just talking about a design element and the reason for that additional five feet.
Yeah. And I, personally, if I was on a commission, I would have recommended more like two feet, just a difference in breakup on that wall. But we can also still plant trees, shrubs, that would also give that element of concealed or basically some sort of screening that I think we're trying to do to complement that wall. So, okay, I, I don't have anything further. Yeah. So let's bring it, go ahead and open up then to the public. Anyone wishing to address the council on this?
Good evening, councilmembers. Steph, I'm here to support the resolution.
Say your name.
John Donaldson, 36 West Olive Street. So sorry, I should know better. I'm here to speak in support of the resolution as defined by Ms. Jardini for a couple of reasons. Number one, the need for this type of commercial building in our city is dire. I mean, it really is. There's people looking for it all the time in the real estate industry. We can't find many. And so I was very excited when... And so I was very excited when this project was started. Of course, it's been a year, year and a half, something in the process. But, you know, it's tough. Development's tough, right? State regulations and so forth make it really hard. I don't think we at the city level need to make it any harder. Staff did a great job working with them to get the design standards up. And I will mention that in his wisdom, I think Darren remembered the the pitfall we fell into on Combine Circle where the design centers there were so tough. It was completely unusable for whatever I wanted to do. So he came up with this plan, you know, okay, here's design center. Let's do that kind of a general idea and then DRC can fine tune it when it comes to it, which is why I think the resident or the the addendum to make it go back to planning commission is just just a bad idea all the way around. And I think planning Darren tried to explain that to planning commission. I was there that night. I think they just missed that. I think it just went over their head because none of them were there when we dealt with Combine Circle. So whatever you decide on the on the storage areas, I think that's a bad description, looking at the project myself. It should be called a storage area. It's just an outdoor area, but it's not like anybody's going to be stacking pipe in there or something. It's just not that kind of usage. So again, I hope you vote in favor of the resolution as Mr. Giardini explained. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else? Okay, we'll close it and bring it back.
And Mayor Protem, quickly, just to confirm that we don't have anyone online as well for maybe 361.
No, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Isaac.
Yes, it's back to us now.
Discussion, yes.
You know, listening to all this, and it would appear that this other language, additional language in item two is just to restate things we already have on books. And it's a responsibility of whoever buys that property to to look into that so that he's doing it the correct way when he first submits it to DRC. So I would be in favor and would propose a motion to approve the appeal allowing the future project review for lots two dash six to be reviewed and approved by the Development Review Committee, period.
Is that a motion?
I'm making that as a motion.
Second. Go with discussion.
Yeah, go ahead.
And just a note for the motion maker. So Councilmember Strong said the motion for option two was to approve the appeal allowing the future project review for lots two to six to be reviewed and approved by the Development Review Committee. And then to confirm that's all so that so that would be the one condition that would be granted for the appeal.
Right.
Okay.
So we're we're eliminating the last part of that.
Right, the five foot setback.
So I just want to make a comment on this because I sat on the DRC for a long time. And the DRC is one of the most valuable tools in our in our city government because it lets the applicants sit down with our planning commissioners and figure out how to make things work and design. Mr. Donaldson said it very nicely is that when people come in, they don't want to come to a big public hearing because our applicant did everything to eliminate that process by offering elements of design that people could use. And I just think it's a really good idea. And the best way to move forward in the past, Robles Way, is to get things done. So when this project's approved, they come back and meet with the DRC, work out everything with the DRC as he did himself in the major design. So I'm very supportive of the of the action. And I think it's really important to preserve the the spirit of DRC and the planning commission in this process and not by step it or go a different direction because it's not consistent in my feeling. For whatever reason, no criticism, I just think we need to keep the DRC healthy and the process because you have a very successful local person who's been through the process before, did everything the DRC asked for, and he should be able to proceed as it's happened in the past. So that's my two cents.
Well said.
Yeah, I'll agree with that too. Again, when I my time on DRC, that was the most intriguing thing I've ever done really with the city. You can get a lot done over the counter of a table, working with a developer to make a better project for the city that fits. And again, they that three member board does have authority to finalize a a design and then, of course, if the rest of the members of the council or the planning commission want to get into it, they can do that. But they do have the authority to to make a final decision there. So again, I I agree with the council. I'm glad that we got this handled. I guess no further discussion. We'll call for the question then. Mary.
Councilmember Strong.
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory.
Aye.
Councilmember Bausch.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hammond.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And thank you for your project.
Yeah, well done. Okay, let's move on to discussion items. We have approval of the 2023 Fourth of July Community Firework Celebration at Barney Schwartz Park. Frida, I guess you have that report.
I do.
We got music?
That's coming later, right? Hopefully.
Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the council, Frida Berman, Public Works Director. Tonight, I am asking you to consider the 2023 Fourth of July Community Firework Celebration at Barney Schwartz Park. As you're aware, the event came back after a 10-year hiatus in 2022 where we partnered with community sponsors and volunteers to successfully host an event for approximately 10,000 attendees that feature children's activities of many sorts. Music provided by KJUG with Pepper Daniels onsite the entire day. Food with food trucks and the next slide. Bear cats in the concession stand. And next slide. Fireworks set to music, continue. Next. I like my sound effects for fireworks.
Yes, you do.
It was a spectacular 20-minute fireworks show set to music. And next slide. For 2023, we planned the same program with the fireworks, but with some additions. Next slide. A more activities for the entire family. Next slide. And two festival-seated concerts free to the public. One beginning at around 5:30 to 7:00 and a headline concert from 7:00 to approximately 9:00 PM, just before the fireworks are fireworks begin. We also hope to have a military flyover this year. We're working early on that. And of course, next slide, it's an opportunity for the community to get together and celebrate our national holiday. Next slide. And next slide. With the added elements, the total budget for the event is estimated at $151,000. Included in that amount is a carryover from the 2022 event of $35,500. And just today, Travel paso approved a contribution of $50,000. The maximum city contribution would be $65,000. Last year it was 60, but this year we are initiating a full sponsorship program. Last year, we had some sponsors donate with no sponsorship program at all. So we are very confident that we can get some sponsors to contribute to this community celebration. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Frida. Questions of Frida?
Councilman McGregor.
Yeah. So Frida, the we're going to have an additional concert, basically, is what we're adding to it and some activities.
So this year, major changes include recreation is going to be taking over a full soccer field and filling that field with activities for the entire family. What we discovered last year is people are out of the habit of going to July 4th and they need activities to spend their day in the park. So recreation is going to be doing that. And we are going to be having two concerts. Steven Stiles, the Steven Stiles Band, who is a country band that plays on KJUG, is our opening act if we dot all the i's and cross all the t's. And the headliner would be the Young Dubliners, which is a very prominent band. Same setup if you were at our New Year's Eve celebration, full stage, full lighting, full sound, all free to the public. So it should be a great day in the park, hoping that we'll have a flyover. We're moving the location of the food trucks to inside the park to create more energy and have not have people go out to the curb. So, you know, we tweak it every year to make it a better event, and I think we'll get more people this year.
Were we able to park everybody last year?
We were. The generous Brett, Mr. Brett Butterfield has already committed his lots to allow us to park this year.
All right, thanks. Looks like a good show.
Councilman Bausch.
So great concept, a great family fun event. Just want to compliment you on adding the sponsorships. I think that that's a brilliant idea, so thank you.
Just hey, great.
I have a question for you, Frida. I mean, roughly timeframe that the event would start in the afternoon, then concluding.
Two o'clock.
Two o'clock, starting then and then.
Yes, so we discovered we started it at noon last year and we discovered that was a little too early. So recreation would kick off their events at two o'clock. Of course, the park will be open. In fact, we generally have people come at 6:00 AM to set up their special spot with their tents. But the activities would kick off at two.
And then the fireworks probably going off around 10 to 10:30.
9:15.
9:15, okay.
9:15, 20-minute show.
Very good. Okay, any questions then from the public? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to council for a discussion and or.
Mr. Hammond. I may we approve this event was as designed and shown to us.
Second.
First by Councilman Gregory, second by Councilman Bausch. Any discussion? Mary, go ahead and call the question, please.
Councilmember Strong.
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory.
Aye.
Councilmember Bausch.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hammond.
Aye. Well done. Thank you.
Moving on, we have our 2022, 23 quarterly report for on budget and amendments.
Ryan Cornell.
Good evening, Mayor Protem Hammond and City Councilmembers. Ryan Cornell, Administrative Services Director. Have a quarterly update report to present to you tonight. I'm sorry in advance, it's not going to be as exciting as Frida's Fourth of July. But this does give us an opportunity to look at our financial analysis of fiscal year 22, 23. It started in July 1 and ends in June 30th this year. And really, I'm going to try to focus this report solely on just the activity in 22, 23. We are going to be planning on doing a revised 10-year financial forecasting into the next budget year. So I'm going to dive a little bit in the future, but for the most part, I'm really going to try to say where we're at for this fiscal year. And so, oh, we already moved ahead a slide. So for the general fund, and this is kind of the the big on the conclusion slide at the beginning of my presentation, revenues were budgeted or estimated at $53.3 million. They're projected now to come in about $55.3 million, so about 1.9, almost $2 million above original estimates, so it's about 3.7% above. Expenditures, again, we were doing a little bit better on expenditures. We had budgeted about $61.1 million. We're trending to be about $59.2. That's kind of very similar to the revenue side, just the opposite direction. So we're looking about $1.9 million budget savings, about 97% of appropriations. So I think overall, that's kind of where we want, you know, what we thought revenues were going to be are coming in at that and what we thought expenses were going to go out the door are just at that too. So the variance between those two is about 3.9 million. That's kind of the the difference going to reserves. And so we initially thought reserves at the end of the year would be about 21.6 million. And now it's going to look closer to about 25 and a half million. So still well above the the 30% threshold. To dive in a little bit deeper on on the revenues, I have up here is the actual sales tax revenue by a kind of industry group. What this looks like, it's looks seen at the actual activity from July to December of 2021 to July, December of 2022. So that's the July to December of 2022 is kind of the latest data that we have as far as sales tax. And as you kind of go left or right on this on this graph, what you'll kind of notice is that the the activity in 2021 is very similar to the activity that we're seeing in 2022. So it's really kind of that first sign of economic activity kind of slowing down or leveling off. If you go four levels over, fuel and service stations, there's still a pretty big jump up there. That's solely related to the fuel prices. But when you kind of overlay all of those with over on a fiscal year basis, this is kind of what we're we're seeing the revenues are going to be coming in at. So I provided a little bit of history to kind of provide context leading up to this fiscal year. But if we kind of focus in on 22, 23, we're projected to come in about $500,000 more than we originally anticipated. So pretty much right right on the marker. The well, for our latest conversations with HDL consultants, they actually provided us an updated 22, I'm sorry, 2023, 24 figure. So even though those two lines right there in the very far left look the same, they are different. They're about $60,000 different, so not much of a change. There's a lot of changes within that number, but the net results we're projecting out for next year pretty much what we thought we were going to be at last year. Moving on to transient occupancy tax. This this revenue source is quite interesting. I'm actually going to I'm making that full prediction and projecting it's actually going to see a year-over-year decline right about 1.2%. So not much of a of a decline, but a decline nonetheless. Now, that is still more than what we originally estimated at this time last year. We had underestimated what our end-of-year TOT revenues were going to be. So that kind of already set the tone for the next year to be kind of underestimated out of the gate. That plus the F22 measure that was also passed in November wasn't factored in the budget. And so that's been updated in the in the actual projected revenues now. So we're kind of again, if we look at 23, we're kind of on the mark there. And then 2024, we're projecting kind of that historical right around 5% to 7% increase that we saw historically prior to the pandemic. Regardless, we're still seeing tourism well above what the levels were pre-pre-pandemic in 2019, as you can see up there too. So even though we're kind of seeing a leveling off there again, we're still well ahead for pre-pandemic. This this graph is still on the general fund and includes all of the revenue components. And then there's this kind of two that I wanted to highlight. There are charges for services and licenses and permits. So both licenses and permits and charges looks like they're going to be coming in considerably over. And that's just kind of a a direct correlation for the work that Moore and his team is doing up in community development and seeing those revenues finally coming coming through. On the expenditure side, this chart kind of breaks down on each department. The the blue line is the projected end-of-year expenditures. The green line is what we had budgeted. And as you kind of see from, you know, as you kind of work your way down, we're right on target for pretty much in every single one of the departments, except for the last one, which was police, and that's kind of the the first element. Measure J20 is a supplements the police and fire budgets, it doesn't supplant them. And so whenever we have a a officer vacancy or a personnel vacancy, we fill the general funded position first and we show the vacancy in Measure J20. So usually budget savings are shown in the in Measure J20, not in the general fund. Second part of that has to do with the labor contracts that were approved this last December. So we approved the contracts, but we didn't do any sort of budget amendments. And so the expenditures end of year have been updated to reflect those increases that were received in January, but the budgets haven't been adjusted yet too. So that's actually taken in a considerable amount of the budget savings that we did have. I'll talk a little bit more in the budget amendments later in the presentation. And then lastly, and you can't really see it on this graph, but it deductive into the financial statements in the in the staff report. We're still working on the organizational restructure where we split up community services and move some of those operations back to Public Works. And so if we look at those two departments, community services shows that operating budget is overspent, but Public Works is significantly underspent. That's just a matter of we have expenses in the wrong spot. And so we're still working through trying to make sure that we're accounting for everything properly. But in totality, we're everything's looking just fine. Moving on to enterprise funds, we are seeing similar resorts there on the on the revenue. On the revenue side, water is getting about 6% more than what the original estimate was. On the wastewater side, it's about 12% more than what we originally estimated. The big portion of why we underestimated that one so much is because that fixed component in the wastewater rates is now becoming more and more of a prominent part, portion of the bill, and so revenues are starting to stabilize a little bit more. And so we don't get those kind of seasonal sewer fluctuations like we did in previous years. And then in both cases, for both water and wastewater, appropriations are in the low kind of 90s, kind of what we're projecting out here. The two other enterprise funds that the city has, one is the solid waste fund and one's the parking fund. Real quick on the solid waste fund, it's, we're calling it an enterprise fund, but for right now and all intents and purposes, it really is a sub-general fund. This is one of the new ones we created during the budget cycle to kind of really kind of take the landfill-related or the waste and recycle-related costs and kind of account for them separately, kind of with the provisions of SB 1383 as well. So right now, it is shown as a standalone fund. The only funding source into that fund is from the general fund, so it's still kind of a general funded program, but we think eventually, or the intent is eventually for it to be a self-sustaining fund. And then on the parking side, we're already kind of seeing citation revenues exceed what we originally estimated, so that's good news there. The loan balance is just a little more than $600,000, and then we're going to do a kind of a whole vamp of the parking financials when we do the 90-day update in a couple months, too, so there's more to come up there. I'm going to dive into our supplemental sales tax measures real quick. These are similar slides that we presented to the Supplemental Sales Tax Oversight Committee as well. Real quick, when it comes to police officers, we have 14 authorized, seven were authorized in the prior fiscal year and seven additional ones this year. We have three that are onboard and hired and working for the city. We had one of them just recently graduated the academy in January time. We have one that's currently in the academy today that's planning on graduating in June, July time. And then we have two others that are later roles that are in some sort of stage of recruitment or background checks and the like. So at the end of the day, we still have eight unfilled and vacant positions. We just did, like I mentioned already, we did recently up the contract negotiations, so we are seeing some positive results on inquiries in our department from then, so that's positive news, but we're still working towards those hires. Outside of that, we had expenditures still programmed into the substation and evidence storage room of its second one way. The camera system upgrade, again, council approved Phase 3 in February time, so we're making progress there. And the data nine-one system is pretty much nearly complete as well. On the fire emergency services side, this one's a little bit more optimistic in that all of our firefighters were hired at one point in time. These, the slides are a little dated, but what had happened was we had a fire marshal, let me take a step backward, Randy right got promoted to deputy chief, that created a battalion chief, or a fire marshal position to be vacant, so then we recruited Paul Paddy, he filled that role in, so then we had a backfill of captain. So this pretty much snowballed all the way down throughout the overall organizations. We have three firefighters that are currently vacant that we're going to be recruiting for here shortly. Two of them were more just normal employee turnover, but that's the latest with firefighters. And then Fire Station Number Three is being fully funded with J-20, the train tower next year. Okay, now I'm going to switch gears, and I'm going over to the capital projects. What amazes me with capital projects and what's important is we finally got all the, you know, all the last year carryovers moved forward, and so that, this is a true current budget as of now, and so we almost have $100 million programmed and budgeted on capital projects. We've only spent 11.5 million of that, so we have quite a bit still to come, so that's like a pretty sizable amount to have budgeted and ready to go. So I'm going to kind of dive in a little bit real quickly on each, kind of these categories. On the miscellaneous projects, we have a citywide user fee study that is just to make sure that we're charging appropriately for the services we provide. Usually it's mostly community development, but we do have parks and rec fees and the like, so we still have money programmed, and we still intend to do that once we complete the development impact fee study. Like I had mentioned, the data nine-one communication systems is nearing complete. We have the EDA fiber project that's still under design, and I think we're going to be going out to bed here very, very soon on the construction of that project. The public safety camera system, that's well underway. And then the Mill Road annexation is programmed and ready to go, too, for $430,000 as well. I know we're making steps or progress in-house, and we haven't really incurred any cost yet, but that's, that project is definitely on the way. When it comes to city facility projects, we do have almost $3 million program for this facility. $2.5 million was kind of left over proceeds for a future City Hall expansion. We use some of those funds to develop space planning and conceptual design, and so we're kind of right now exploring what's the next step, what are we actually going to do, and then we have the money program to do the final design. Outside of that, we have kind of some miscellaneous repairs and maintenance on this facility. They're kind of listed up there, too, and we're just now getting started on working on those projects. Very similarly, Centennial Park has about $300,000 program for these items, areas, or these items. I know Dwayne is working on the gym floor replacement, that contract should be coming to council for here very shortly. And then we're really trying to figure out how we can fund this courtyard arbor repair. It's coming, the costs are coming in a little bit higher than we had anticipated, so we're still working on a budget development there. And then we have about $200,000 program to Barney Schwartz Park for parking lot improvements, some consistent stand improvements, the light cleaning, and then we also have the bicycle pump track that Frida has been giving updates on every... And then four other facilities are kind of listed there, the pickleball courts over at Sherwood Park is kind of the big one to point out there. And then when it comes to transportation, we have a considerable amount of money programmed to infrastructure-related projects. And so this isn't necessarily the road maintenance work, this is all transportation enhancements. So we have the big Niblick Road corridor project, we got the state grant funding for that for $17.5 million. I'm not going to really read through the list, but this is the all-incensive list of infrastructure projects we have programmed with the budget for me. And then there's the second page to that. So all in all, we have $51.2 million program for these capital projects. And then lastly, this is the road maintenance one. This is the full list of the road maintenance projects that we have budgeted for for this fiscal year and where we're at. So we have about $23 million programmed there. You'll see the third one down is the Sunset Panorama area, that's the newly programmed money that council approved, J-24. And then if you go about midway down, West Side Street, Slurry and Chipstall, that's the other half of that additional appropriations there. And then, me personally, the most important street on that one is 17th Street, even though I don't live there or anywhere near that, but that road's pretty good, so that one's definitely programmed and ready to go. And then lastly are the kind of budget amendments that we have, and so there's only a few of them to be had. The first one is the outreach services librarian. The budget called for two additional librarians in this fiscal year, consistent with the five-year strategic plan. One librarian was going to be in the first year, and the second library was planned for the second year of the budget. When we did the recruitment for this one, we actually found two viable candidates that will be able to fill either one of the roles, and so we didn't want to lose this one candidate, so we were asking for a three-month advancement on this one position, so that we could hire both people that we recruited for. The second request is related to the fire department and specifically the fire prevention specialist. We had included in the budget, you know, due to the whole residential development, a second fire prevention specialist, a second David Costas essentially. After talking with Chief Stornetta about the needs of the department and what we could bring in-house, we're recommending upgrading this position to a fire prevention specialist two. With the difference between a one and a two is very specifically on the commercial-related reviews. And so right now, we're contracted that the commercial-related reviews out to someone else, and so if we were to get authorizations, we could increase that position so that they could take some of that work in-house as well. It also kind of creates a more of a kind of linear growth path as well for any of the people in that fire prevention unit as well. And along those same lines, too, we really don't really have space for additional fire prevention specialists. And so Jonathan has been, and Randy been working and looking at the airport fire station. We do have a fire station out there that's currently vacant, and so with about $45,000 worth of tenant improvements, we're going to relocate the prevention number that way. Like I had mentioned, the employee contracts were approved in December time, but we didn't do budget amendments for those ones. The total cost of the contracts for 2223 was estimated about $1.4 million. The request is only for about $500,000, so that's an actual budget amendment. That's, again, just giving more, a little bit more reading room into the 97% of appropriations in the general fund. The fifth item is related to a mentorship program out over at the airport. We kind of realized with the changeover in managers and the kind of the spotlight and focus on growth and economic growth out there, we felt it was important to get professional services that really kind of do a read, or an analysis of the airport operations when where it needs to go, so that appropriations was for $105,000. And then lastly, and it's kind of what Frida has been mentioning to you through the capital projects, updates is the water feature is coming in over budget a little bit. We have a development impact fee funds that we can use to appropriate that, so about $25,000 is needed from those funds to go towards that project. And with that, Mr. Hammond, that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions, comments, or concerns you might have.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Questions?
One quick question on the roads thing. One thing I didn't see that I thought was being done this year was Commerce Way.
That's actually the very first one up there.
Oh, that Sherwood?
Sherwood Airport, that's all of them.
That includes Commerce Way?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Questions? Anything? Councilman Bausch?
Great presentation, thanks for making it very concise. On the revenue side, how much of that is attributed to inflation? Have you adjusted for that, or, and same thing on the expenses? The revenue up is great, but you, for the same reason, you would think that expenses, but you've done a great job of controlling expenses, so thank you for that. Do we need to worry about inflation?
No, so I don't think we need to worry about inflation. I think we're doing quite well managing our budgets as is. The other thing to note that, you know, right around two-thirds of the overall general fund budget is, goes to people, and so those are not affected by inflation indirectly, but not directly affected by inflation. So I think departments have done a really good job managing their costs and then keeping an eye on that. There are very, there are several line items that when we kind of dive into the details on water, for example, we know, or I'm sorry, not water, gas, for example, those, all those line items are going over budget, and so right now, we're kind of taking that approach as we have savings in other areas that we're covering those, but when we do the budget update, those all kind of taken into consideration and...
The revenue, the sales tax projection, quite a bit for auto and service stations and gas, that was higher than, but I'm assuming that's just because of the increase in gas prices as well.
Yeah, increase in cost of gases.
Double that sort, but thank you.
Councilman Gregory?
So Ryan, a quick question, is the 911 project complete or very close, or?
From what I understand, it's really close.
Yeah.
You're talking about the radio communications, not the cameras?
It was the, I thought it was the 911 budget.
There's, well, there's two of them, that's...
It is, believe. Oh, it's included with communications.
Yeah, that one is complete. There are some issues with, when we had to transfer everything over into the new system, RIMS is now finding that there are some errors with the old system. They have caught them all up until November, which is one of the reasons I had to postpone my presentation from tonight until next month, but the, it's done. It is done, it is just catching up as far as transferring all the data from the old system to the new system and making sure it's doing it correctly.
Very good. And Ryan, just one more positive comment. I knew it was a good report by your haircut. Thank you.
That was the jacket.
Yeah, you look sharp. No, my question is, well, first off, you know, it looks like all the departments are within their budget, which is good. They're watching their numbers really close, so that's a good sign. I didn't see anything on the airport enterprise, though. All right, so I always kind of watch that account a little bit. Did we just not have a whole lot to report on that, or?
Pretty much. The only thing to report was that $105,000 mentorship kind of program was the only anomaly that's so far in this fiscal year with that.
Okay. And then the other thing I noticed was on the enterprise fund for parking. It appears that we are actually $83,000 on the plus side. You see, we're in the far right actual to date. It's about $83,000 that revenues have come in higher than the expenses, so it looks like we're on the good black side of the line, so to speak. Is that correct?
On a very 10,000-foot level, yes, but if you kind of dive into the revenue number, we'll kind of realize that it's being carried by citations, and so we know in the long term that's not a good ongoing revenue stream.
So the data that we're collecting right now, trying to figure out whether they stay longer than two hours, really is not conclusive yet, or we're not, are we seeing any trends, I guess, yet?
I mean, we're getting the same trends that we did before. We know how many free sessions that we have on average.
Yeah, we'll see. I think we're supposed to look at it 90 days since we passed, and then another 90 possibly after that to get a good picture if we're in the black, which is really the whole goal there. The other last question I had, Ryan, was I noticed something for the lobby door. Is that just singular, or is that plural? In other words, we've had problems with their sliding doors out there, and I'd sure like to see something get fixed, true, but how many, 80 grand for one door, or?
Both, both doors.
There you go.
And they're arriving in April.
Ah, excellent. So that's the one that goes up to City Hall and then?
The two outer doors.
Two, okay, so we have swing doors here on the north and south, basically?
Correct, yeah, the two interior doors are not ordered yet. They're part of our security assessment that we just completed for City Hall, so we'll be making additional recommendations with regard to those doors.
Okay, very good, Frida, thank you. Oh, make sure you change that lock, I can't get into the two swing doors right now with my key. I don't know, I have to go all the way around to get up and on a weekend to get something, so, all right, thank you. Okay, then any other questions? Seeing none, we'll open up to the public. Anybody having questions on Ryan Cornell's report? Okay, this is President...
We do have a caller for public comment, we have Jan Albin.
Yeah, okay, Jan, if you hear me, go ahead.
And you can hear me, and you can hear me all right?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. My question is for Ryan. Ryan, on attachment number seven regarding the J-20 supplemental sales tax funds, on page two, there is a transfer to measure E-12 street program. And first of all, can you tell me why we do that or why we have to do that? And when does E-12 supplement that, or I'm sorry, sunset? And do we have a plan for when E-12 does sunset? What do we do from there? Thank you very much.
Go ahead, Ryan, if you can answer a question.
So the transfers is an accounting mechanism, so we account for all of our road projects in one capital improvement program fund. And so the way it shows, because Measure J-20 is a standalone, separate fund, the only way to get money into the capital improvement program is via those transfers. It's important to keep kind of capital improvements in kind of one area because they usually take several years to complete, and it's easier to count for projects than having a standalone fund for all intents and purposes. Along those same lines is attachment number six should be the E-12 activity, so they should be seen and transferred in from Measure J-20 on the E-12 side of it, too, so it's like it should go both ways. Measure E-12 sunsets in 2024, so actually, or fiscal year 2425, so March 31st, 2025. And actually, earlier this week, City Manager's Office and I sat down, kind of gave our first preliminary discussions on how and what we're going to do as far as renewing E-12 and what our strategies are. Mr. City Manager, I don't know if you have anything else to add to that conversation, but we're kind of, we're talking about it, but it's still pretty early on.
You'll be bringing something back to council to discuss that further?
Absolutely.
Yeah, you bet. So I can just give you a quick summary on that, Mr. Hammond and council members. So yes, E12 is definitely on our radar. We know it's going to expire quickly and we need to get that before the council to help provide us with some guidance on next steps. There are certainly a lot of benefits to renewing E12, including a one-time $5 million award for a renewal for a specific, or excuse me, a dedicated funding source for roads, which we would certainly be able to use effectively. But more importantly, we've learned a lot of lessons over this timeframe about our roads. We've got a lot of feedback from the community. And so what we're really trying to implement now is a comprehensive approach, not to just repairing roads, but bringing forward a continuous maintenance program. For instance, roads that we may have repaired 10 years ago still need to be maintained in order to keep them at that quality. You can't just repair a road and then move on. So we're kind of doing a hand in glove approach is what we're looking at. We need to be able to bring a comprehensive financing proposal, how we would use the money, why we would use the money. And and of course, I think one of the biggest things that Ms. Albin brought up is the sunset provision, whether or not we want to continue with that so we don't find ourselves in this position 10, 12 years from now. Ultimately, last update I have is we have about $250 million worth of road repairs that the city is looking at. And I think that this budget or this review kind of points out where we are financially with nowhere close to $250 million in the bank.
Very good. Okay, thank you, Ryan. Any other on line? Okay, we're good there. So this is a presentation only, no action needed from the council?
Actually, we do have.
There is a motion.
Oh, there is. Oh, yeah, there is. Okay. Don't bring them up, council, then go ahead and make a motion.
We approve Resolution 23XX, amending the budget for fiscal year 2022 and 2023 to reflect the updates as discussed and amending the authorized positioning listing by adding one outreach services librarian and one fire prevention specialist, two, and removing one fire prevention specialist, one position.
Second. Okay, we have it first by Councilman Gregory, second by Councilman Strong. Any discussion? Okay, go ahead and call the question then, please.
Councilmember Gregory.
Aye.
Councilmember Strong.
Aye.
Councilmember Bausch.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Hammond.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, my apologies, but I have to be at the airport at 5:00 AM.
That's right.
My apologies to Echo. I would have loved to have your presentation. I did read it.
Have a good trip.
Thank you.
And be safe. Thank you. Yes. Make sure if you want to do that real quick.
Thank you.
Back to the floor.
We're ready.
Okay, bring back open meeting and we have item three. Helica, report on the Echo organization.
Thank you. Tonight, Echo is here to provide their second quarter report under the memorandum of understanding with the city, which you approved on August 16th of 2022. Under this memorandum of understanding, the city has agreed to provide Echo with quarterly payments of $55,500 over the course of two years for a total of $444,000. The funding request was approved after an ad hoc committee, which included councilmembers Hammond and Gregory, was formed to review requests for funding from Echo. The committee met several times and their findings were included in the MOU, which was approved by city council. In accordance with the MOU, Echo has maintained 50 temporary shelter beds, formed a community stakeholder committee that meets quarterly, established a 24-hour telephone line for stakeholders to report issues, and submitted quarterly statistical data and financial reports. To report on these and other criteria outlined in the MOU, we have Kate Swarthout with Echo Operations and Client Services today. And the recommendation we are making tonight is that council receive and file Echo's second quarterly report and direct staff to disburse the funds in the amount of $55,500.
Very good.
Thank you.
Good evening, or should I say good night?
Yeah, almost.
Unfortunately, I don't have any fun sound effects for you this evening, but I do have Echo's version of fireworks with our statistics and success stories. So I'm excited to share those with you tonight. So we wanted to talk a little bit about where the funding that we are receiving from the city of Passerables is going, and you will see that 100% of that funding that we are receiving from the city is going towards our staffing. We have 13 staff full-time at the Passerable Shelter. And that consists of case management staff, overnight shelter staff, program, shelter manager, myself as well. So of our total funding that we receive, 71% of that does go directly to client services, and those are our case managers and the other things that really are impacting our clients' lives. And you can see that we have 23% goes to building and maintenance and 6% goes to admin costs. And we are able to maintain this breakdown because of our volunteers. We have a huge volunteer base of over 1,500 community members who do donate their time, their skill, their services, as you can see, for almost 31,000 hours of volunteer time per year. So it's really amazing. Our volunteers are phenomenal. So some of our statistics from this quarter, you can see our total shelter stays for December, January, and February, along with our quarterly totals. Individuals that did not receive a room because we are at that 50-bed max. And then our unduplicated nightly shelter stays, which again is just, those are individual heads that were on a pillow each night. So we currently have, we went from 28 people in our 90-day program in December to 30 in January, up to 37 in February. We are currently at 42 as of today because we just moved in a large family this week. So this is a really exciting statistic that I wanted to share with you. So December, we did not have anyone housed in December. However, we had eight people housed in January. We've had two people housed in February, and so far this month, we have had four people housed just so far this month in March alone. So and we're, you know, three-quarters of the way through the month. So really amazing statistic with how many people that we are getting housed. Really exciting. We've had four people find employment in December, five in January, and six in February. So far this month, I believe we are at five people find employment so far this month. So you can see just some photos of some of our additional services, our neighborhood cleanup, some of our volunteers, some of our other organizations that come on site to offer services like TIMA, which is Transitions Mental Health Association. And we have workers from the Department of Social Services who come out to offer assistance with CalFresh or food stamps. And some of our other programs are meal program. We served a total of 7,778 dinners over the quarter. 275 showers were provided, and that includes all toiletries needed. We also have clothing racks that we bring out for people to get clean clothes when they're done with their showers. We have 750 no-cook food bags that we're giving out for the quarter, five referrals to mental health, three to drug and alcohol for the quarter, and 19 to other resources. We also were able to restart our laundry program as well, and we've done 144 loads of laundry for the quarter. And that's something that our clients are really loving having access to. We provide laundry detergent, dryer sheets, and pay for the service as well. One of the things I wanted to bring up that is not on here is that we have had five people at the shelter so far in the last two months who have decided to take that next step into sobriety. And they are going to AA meetings. We also have, are starting AA meetings at the shelter next week, and those will be held weekly. And I just think it's a really amazing statistic to share because it really does show how having that stability of being in the shelter and in our 90-day program really can help people then take that next step to get clean and sober. This is a repeat of the, of last quarter, but just kind of showing you what other services we do have that come to the shelter. We have an accountant coming tomorrow to offer free tax service. We have financial literacy and financial planning coming, in addition to the other services that you can see on your slide. Many of you have been to our Neighborhood Stakeholders Meeting. We are holding that quarterly, and this last meeting, we did have 11 different community members as well as yourself, city leadership there, and business owners in attendance. So that was amazing, and we're really thankful for the participation and the feedback that we are receiving. We are also doing our cleanup of Black Oak. We do that weekly with staff and volunteers who go out and clean up trash in the neighborhood. We still have not received any calls on our 24-hour line, but we have had some businesses who are emailing us through the day and we are going out to support them. Our outreach case manager goes out to support them with their concerns. So I wanted to share a couple of success stories from the quarter. This is Kyle. I'll let you read in detail about Kyle's story, but he was just amazing. He came to us from rehab and had a lot of physical issues that were caused from years of drinking. He was so willing to help out at the shelter with anything he could because he was just so grateful to be there. And after being there for a few months, we were able to get him a Section 8 voucher, and he and his wife were able to get an apartment. So that was just a really amazing story. And then he is now getting his physical issues addressed as well now that he's housed. And this is Yaselin. You may have seen her story. It was recently picked up with the Passerables Press and KBY. She came to us with her two young daughters and worked really closely with our case management team. They got her connected with Eckerd's Connect to give her some on-the-job training. She was able to get hired at a local coffee shop and saved up enough money to get back on her feet and was able to rent a room for herself and her daughters. And she still is working with Eckerd's Connect to further her education and her career goals. So very exciting for her as well. And that is all I have. Are there any questions?
Well, well done. Thank you.
None, that was it.
It's amazing. You guys are definitely making an impression on everybody down there, and that's what we like to see, that's for sure.
I do have one, I do have one question. So I like statistics. So what I'm seeing on the board is between 50 and 60 housed people this year, maybe?
Well, so far in 2023, like what our goal is?
You're at 14 right now, right?
We are shooting for a pretty big number this year, yes.
That's big.
Yeah, so the whole team this year, Wendy Lewis with Echo, we're really, now that we've been there several years, the team is even getting more solid as you, you know, you grow within your organization. And we are so committed to getting people housed. That's just what we do. So we, as a team, between both locations, at each 10 individuals or families housed, we celebrate somehow. And it's a celebration really to honor the staff that are doing the hard work. And it can be something that's lunch or a breakfast or a Target gift card, but it's almost like the ringing of the bell when the cancer patient, you know, gets that success. And then the other thing we're doing, because we want our residents and the people that are making those forward steps to feel honored. At both locations, we browdered painting, donated kind of a border that's going to have kind of inspirational something. And then when someone gets housed, we have three different colors of Echo blue, and they're going to put their handprint on the walls. So to show that that individual, and then when we have a meeting with our current folks, they see those hands and they are inspired. So it's been just a really incredible year in between both locations. But first and foremost, I want to thank the city of Passerables for the ongoing support and for the council and the community. That's what's making this work and be successful. And Protem Mayor Hammond mentioned it earlier, but we are bringing our first-ever fundraiser to the city of Passerables. We are so excited. We're partnering with Studios on the Park, which is donating their beautiful venue. We are going to have an evening version of empty bowls. The community can buy a ticket and come out, get a beautiful artisan bowl, delicious soups that are donated around the restaurants around the park, and just celebrate with Echo as a community for the successes that are happening because of the city and the community. So April 27th, 5:00, 5:30 to 7:00, I want to see everybody there. And one of the things that we continue to see is that we're serving Passerables. We're averaging between 85% and 90% through our data tracking that are people that are from this community. So it's neighbors helping neighbors. So thank you, and I'll turn it back over to Kate.
Thank you, Wendy.
I have a comment, but I'll wait till after the public.
Yeah, any questions? Councilman Bausch, any questions at all? Okay, so yeah, Councilman Gregory. Well, okay, if you had a comment.
No.
So I wanted to mention something that's very significant. So I sit on the H-SOC committee. And after meeting with, what's the new guy for, is it Joe? He's head of the homeless services. But this is, this is shockingly good news, in my opinion. So Janet Nichols just opened her center down in AG, and they're on the 90-day program. All the tiny house programs that Joe is presenting with cities are 90-day programs. And Prado Road just announced they're going to the 90-day program because it works. So now we have the entire community, thanks to Echo leading the way, admitting, not admitting, but working with all, everybody else and going to a 90-day program for rehousing people. And it's just proof in the pudding. You put, you give them love and attention and food, and they come out of there where they're at, and they go to better places. So now we have the entire group of major homeless facilities all into the 90-day program, which is really stunning. And the new, the new tiny house programs, there's four of them being presented, and we're working on one, one additional one to work with Echo or whoever in conjunction with Echo. So all those four new operations will be 90-day programs. And it's really making a significant difference. I think our own police department, I think Mr. Ivana said that it really works. They can see the people going from the river to the house. And that's my new expression, from river to house. But the, it's just working, and it's just such a pleasure to see it because we're one of the few bright spots in homeless recovery and getting people into houses and homes. And I just want to say thank you to Echo for leading the way and teaching us what we're supposed to be doing. Sometimes the government has to learn the right way, which we are. Passerables is just lucky enough to have you guys here helping us. So thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay. Mayor, do we have anybody online? Okay. I didn't ask anybody in the public, one person maybe, if they have anything. So yeah, it's a great partnership we have with Echo, and I'm glad we are using our tax dollars to help and support an NGO like yourselves that are doing so much good work. It's the way to make it work, for sure.
Thank you all.
Thank you for your report.
And we'll, we'll be there on the 27th.
Good. We're happy to see you all.
Are we selling tickets yet for that? Is that, where do we get them?
Yes, on our website.
On the website, thank you.
You'll be able to find them. Thank you.
Thursday, April 27th, 5:30. Okay. Then we're on to City Manager Report. Mr. Lewis?
Mayor, I do think we have an action item on Echo.
Did we? Oh, you're right. You're right. I'm sorry. Yeah, let's go ahead and make a motion then to receive and file.
Motion to receive and file Echo's second quarterly report and direct staff to disburse funds in the amount of $55,500.
Second. Thank you. Be it first by Councilman Bausch, second by Councilman Gregory. Call for the question.
Councilmember Bausch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gregory.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Hammond.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And now we're on to the City Manager Report.
Ready for me?
Thank you.
All right. So lots going on in the community. First off, a big thank you to our staff. As our presentations showed this evening, there's a lot going on in the community, including, you know, keeping a healthy budget and working with the dollars that the council has dedicated to community services. So we're very proud and thankful for that. One of our big focuses over the last several months has started off with, I think Mr. Hammond mentioned it in his council comments last time about going to Washington DC for seeking approval for funding for Highway 46 Silver Cross. That continues all of our efforts, including recently, I'd like to thank Mr. Hewitt and his work with Townsend and others to prepare requests from our, not only our federal leaders, but our state leaders for apportionments from their budgets to help us fund those. So we've submitted requests from Senator Feinstein's office, Senator Padilla's office, as well as Mr. Panetta, our congressman, for our new congressman for our district, to fund several community projects, including asking for assistance for the $52.5 million. Tomorrow, I'll be leaving first thing in the morning to head to Los Angeles to attend the California Transportation Commission meeting and Evening Mixer to be able to meet with our CTC representatives to again bring our TSEP application to the forefront, which is a request to fund this entire project, which is critical to our future, which I think probably everybody in the community and my staff has heard ad nauseam about, but we continue to press the way for that. So there's lots going on in the community with respect to our relentless pursuit of additional tax dollars to be able to offset costs, improve services to the community. And that's the end of my report.
Okay, thank you, Ty. Go ahead and get to council business and committee reports. Councilman Bausch.
Thank you. Just thank you to everyone, staff dealing with the rain. Great job. I seem to be doing better than January. Was able to attend a couple of meetings. Senior Advisory Committee, my first one. It was a lot of fun out there, listening to a lot of good people, a lot of energy. I was very impressed with all the things that are going on. Had, had an abbreviated Parks and Recreation meeting, even though it was abbreviated, it was informative. I learned a lot, connected with some old friends, so that was nice. Went to a Main Street Board Meeting that was hosted by Firestone Locker Brewery. Got the, I would say the nickel tour, but it went on for a couple of hours. It was an amazing tour, and just thanks to Firestone for all they do for the community. And then finally, Passerables Housing Authority, my first meeting. Met and reconnected with a lot of old friends there. Very impressed with what's going on with their pipeline, all the different things and projects that they have in place. Wish them a lot of success and hope to be able to continue to work with the Passerables Housing Authority. That's my report.
Okay, thank you, Chris. Councilman Gregory?
Yeah, I got to meet with Majestic Realty and one of their members. Also, I had two meetings with H-SOC. One was the general meeting where we approved a lot of the funding for the three major shelter providers. And then I had another meeting after that with H-SOC. So my meetings are H-SOC, H-SOC, H-SOC. But everything else, we're good. So we're all good. Thank you.
Okay.
Oh, and thank you, thank you, everybody, for the reports tonight. I'm quite excited about the fireworks. Got to work on your audio a little, but we're good.
All right, thank you, Steve. My reports, meeting with Integrated Waste Management, San Luis. Also had the monthly mayor's meeting that I'm attending for Mayor Martin, and that was last Friday down in Grover Beach. We actually yesterday had a quarterly tri-agency meeting with 400 Ligon and King City and Passerables. And we held it at Camp Roberts is where they hosted it. And the big discussion, it was actually economic director, myself and Paul Sloan spoke on the Golden Spike. We actually handed out, take a bunch of those brochures, Ty, when you go down south. It was very, very well-received, and they were very interested in the project and what's going to happen here for Passerables. So that's all I have for my meetings. And moving on then for upcoming events, we have Passerables Development Review Committee May, our Monday, March 27th, next Monday. And then we have, again, the Planning Commission next Tuesday, a week from today, at 6:30 here in these chambers, March 28th. Following that, they're going to have another Passerables Development Review Committee on Monday, April 3rd, 3:30. And then finally, our Passerable City Council then comes back here on April 4th at 6:30. Okay, anybody have anything else further?
Move to adjourn.
All right. Second, first by Gregory, second by Bausch. All in favor? Aye, we stand adjourned.